Hi, everyone. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Fran, we almost ready?
Uh, yes, I'm ready whenever you are.
Okay. Um, alright, I got six thirty-ish. I'll give it one more minute, then I'll call it. Okay, Fran, we all set?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, and welcome, everybody, and Happy New Year to all, and welcome to the Lowell Planning Board for Monday, January fourth, two thousand twenty-one. Uh, the first matter we have on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for December seventh of two thousand twenty. Anybody have any corrections or any, um, comments for the minute? Uh, what's the request for the minute? Anybody hear me? Okay.
The Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the December seventh, uh, as submitted.
Okay, we have a motion. Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Bichette, second by Mr. Lockout, I believe. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Here votes yes, so those minutes are approved. Uh, the first matter we have on the agenda this evening is a site plan review and special permit for seven twenty-four Tensford Street and eighteen Weldman Street. Uh, Eva Development LLC and Crete Development LLC have applied to the Planning Board for a site plan review and special permit approval to construct a drive-through ATM building at the subject property. The property is in the high-rise commercial zoning district and requires a site plan review and special permit approval under section eleven, excuse me, twelve point four G one of the Lowell zoning ordinance. We did receive correspondence today that the applicant, the applicant was requesting that the matter be continued to January twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one at our next meeting. Um, what's the request to the board on that matter?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we defer it to the next meeting.
Okay, so we have a motion to continue the matter by Mr. Malovich. Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, motion made and second, all in favor say aye? Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, that is approved. That matter, anybody who's watching, will be continued to January twenty-first, twenty-one. The next matter is a site plan review and special permit for six ten Gorm Street. Nelson Group has applied to the Planning Board for site plan review and special permit approval to redevelop existing building at the above address into a four-unit residential structure. The building currently has three residential units and one vacant commercial unit. The subject property is located in the urban neighborhood mixed-use zoning district and requires site plan review approval under section eleven point four to expand a residential structure with more than three dwellings and a special permit approval per section twelve point one D for the U. Also a variance per section six point one for relief from the off-street parking requirement. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Absolutely. Good evening, board members. My name is John Bavuso. I'm the Operations Manager for the Nelson Group. Thank you for taking the time. What we would like to do with this parcel, I hope you've all had a chance to view the building, or at least look at the pictures of it. It's obviously the worst-looking structure on the block. So, we, uh, distressed properties, we rehabilitate them, we revitalize them, we bring them up to a fine, good-looking structure and make the best use out of it we can. Given the demographics of this neighborhood, we believe that an additional residential unit would fit in most admirably in this location. I don't think that we need another convenience store or hair salon or something of that similar matter. Um, the building, as you see it, occupies almost all of the lot. There's a very small parking area in the back. There is a limited amount of off-street parking in the front. It is within walking distance to a public transportation site. We think that a residential unit here is the best choice for this building. So, we don't plan on making any major changes to the structure, other than we're going to remove the twelve-by-twenty-one garage that is built on the side of it, what's currently covered with Tyvek. Um, it's, has no purpose whatsoever. The pedestrian crosswalk and, uh, light pole have been placed directly in the path of the access door that was in there. Removing the garage will give us another two hundred and fifty square feet of open space on the lot. We understand that the parking is well below par. I mean, we can get legally three spots in there. I believe right now it's striped off and has been used for four or five spots. We don't see, you know, if we tore it all up, the parking lot, we're not going to gain another parking space in there. There just isn't the room for it. What we have is an old building, old parking lot. We're trying to do the best we can with it. We appreciate any cooperation or any input you might have in the matter and anything that we can do better, you know? We've built several of these buildings. This is what we do. We buy the oldest stressed ones. We rehabilitate them, we make them look nice, we provide affordable, clean, safe housing. So, that's what we're hoping to do here in Lowell. Obviously, the neighborhood is coming up. All of the buildings around it have been redone. You can see that all of the small retail stores that were once in this neighborhood have now been converted, you know, mostly to residential. There is one small computer store across the street. But, that, that's our hopes, that we can take this building, bring it back to what it should be. I hope you've all had a chance to look at the renderings that we're planning on doing. Um, we have recently hired another engineer to help us. The original engineer that was doing the plans just wasn't working out. We weren't getting any communication and no follow-through on it. We now have a firm that employs both architects, structural engineers, mechanical engineers, and we already have a fire protection engineer on board. So, we are at a stage now where we can hopefully step in and rehab this building and make it something to be proud of.
Is there anything else you want to add, sir? Does anybody else want to speak on behalf of the applicant? Am I being heard okay?
Yep.
Okay.
Silence is deafening.
Sir, is there anything else you'd like to say?
No, sir, I'm done.
Okay, anybody else on, on behalf of the applicant want to speak? Do you have anybody else on your team who wants to speak, or anybody else, sir? No?
No, sir, I'm here by myself.
Okay, alright. So, at this point in time, what I'll do is I'll turn it over to the public to see if anybody would like to be heard, uh, at this point in time. If anybody here, anybody like to speak and be gussets project? Anybody like to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? Hearing none at this point in time? Uh, anybody like to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Hearing none at this point, I would turn it over to any board members. Have any questions, comments, concerns?
I have a couple of questions, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Lockout.
Um... To the applicant, if you could clarify the existing mix of commercial and residential units that are present on the site. Uh, just confirm what's there now. It's a little confusing in our notes here, and I just want to make sure that's...
I agree a hundred percent, sir, and we have a letter from the Building Commissioner. It's three residential units and one retail commercial unit. Um, the building had previously been gutted. I, I apologize. I've only been with the company for four months, although I've known Mr. Olivera for seventeen years. But the property had previously been gutted under separate permits. I'm not quite sure why or what happened, and the permits had expired. So, we have reapplied, and again, we want to make it, we don't see any, any future there for another retail or commercial entity that, that just isn't any call for it. You know, the housing shortage throughout the Commonwealth, we think the additional residential unit at this location makes the best use of the property.
Okay, and, and you indicated you had a letter from the Building Commissioner?
Yes, sir. It should be included in the package. If not, I could certainly forward it to you.
Alright, one other question regarding the, uh, number of bedrooms that are proposed to each unit. Could you step us through that, where it impacts the parking requirement? Uh, I'd like to, you know, make that clear, so what that is...
Absolutely, sir. There'd be two bedrooms per each of the four units. The original plan that was drawn up a couple of years ago did show four bedrooms on the ground floor, two units. Uh, we spoke with Mr. Fuller, the Building Commissioner, and we had revised that last week to remove two bedrooms from each of the ground floor units. So, each unit will have two bedrooms.
Okay.
Do we have that updated material in our packet? Because I'm looking at a document that looks like it's dated December twenty-second, and they're still showing four units. And I think that that's the most up-to-date material that we have. I, I can double-check, but I was looking at one that I thought was the most updated.
It would, unfortunately, it would have been a week ago today that we got the revised plan. Again, we've been having trouble, and we just last week hired a new engineer. I do have the revised plan, and I can certainly send it over to you. I don't know why he, he put four units in there, there's four bedrooms to start with. It's way too many for, you know, that size building. But it is two bedrooms per unit.
Uh, just one comment a- as well, uh, and I'm not sure, I'm looking at the most up-to-date print after listening to you. This print shows the corner of Gorm and Central, uh, dated December eighteenth. It's a, a, a print, a general print of the, the building itself, and parking off to the right. It's kind of angled parking that's from, uh, four, five, four, one, two, actually, three. As far as, you know, it's just, uh, I don't think it's workable, the way you've got it drawn here.
That's the existing condition, sir, and I agree with you a hundred percent.
Alright, that is. Now, what's labeled here in the print is Proposed Plot Plan.
Yes, we're going to remove the garage section.
Yep.
So, again, it, it's useless. Uh, it'll give us more open space, it'll give us storage for trash barrels, it will give us some snow storage in addition to the, uh, small sliver of space at the rear of the property.
Right, so what we're looking at here is not... Not up to date.
That's correct. We were looking at trying to increase the parking lot in this area, but if you see where it says Batum and its concrete parking in that line, that is actually the end of the existing paving. If we took up the rest of that yard, we would not gain any additional parking. There just isn't... At the longest, the parking lot is forty-nine feet. So, there's no area in there for us to increase the parking. I've, I've walked through the neighborhood to look for additional parking spaces, and, you know, there just isn't any opportunity for us.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Lockout. Any other board members?
Uh, the Chairman, I have a question.
Sure, absolutely, Caleb.
So, and ask, um, how would the parking space be appropriated by, uh, between the tenants?
We, we'd have to be first come for a serve. I don't believe that we could, uh... If we could get a fourth space, we could allow one per unit. But, we are going to the Zoning Board of Appeals again for that, because we do not have the dimensional length of the parking areas there. You know, unless we put in one space tandem, but couldn't do that if one was per each unit. So, we are going to the Board of Appeals to require for the parking. Um, I do not have a good plan on how to divide the parking between the tenants, unfortunately. It's just, there isn't much room there to work with for us.
Well, thank you for the explanation.
Yeah.
But I, I would think that, like, and are, are the units intended to be condos or apartments?
At this time, we're looking at rental properties.
Okay.
So, I, we don't know what the market is in this area for condo sales. So, but right now, it looks like they would be rented.
So, I would think that the landlord probably, uh, will have to be the person, make sure that the parking situation is understood among the tenants, then?
Absolutely.
Okay.
You know, it's nowadays, it's not unusual to even buy a condo without a parking space. It's, you know, that's what we're coming to. We're building every place.
I don't know where you do that.
Medford.
When I'm in Medford?
Yeah, I know that.
Okay, over in Lowell, good luck to you.
Yeah.
That's all I have, Chairman. Okay, thank you, Caleb. Any other board members?
Yeah, I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Uh, is the building vacant now?
Yes, sir, it is.
It appeared to look vacant when I went by. So, there's no tenancy in there now?
No, sir. It's been vacant for, I think, at least three or four years. The building has been gutted out previously.
Um... If, um, it really comes out of the parking, I think, I liked your rendering of what it could look like. Um, I wouldn't really support doing that to that building. But the issue here is parking, and I don't know what to do about that. Uh, I guess it's all up to the Board of Appeals, whether they're going to grant you at least one per unit. Uh, or a various, we had one per unit and a various, so only have three. Uh, and park on the streets for the rest. Um... If you stayed at three rental units and tried to find a use for the existing commercial that would still create a parking demand, unless you kept it exactly right and just renovated the interior and exterior, not changing anything except for the garage, you can remove the garage. Uh, I guess it really, I don't know what the answer is. Uh, it was really up to the Board of Appeals to see what they would allow. And we would go, I think we would go along with that. At least I would.
Well, I appreciate your input, and one of our ideas was to increase the existing curb cut. That would allow us to get one more parking space where the vacant garage was, but we still wouldn't have the setbacks of three feet from the building and three feet from the property line.
Yeah.
So, it's one more issue that we could bring to the Board of Appeals. We're, we're trying to do this with as minimal impact to the surroundings as possible. We are planning a three-foot rain garden along the side of the building. I know the plan doesn't show up, but there is a raised burn three feet out from the back of the building. We're going to remove the asphalt, do raised planting, put our downspouse into it, try to keep as much of the water on-site as we can. Um, there's naturally smoke downhill to the catch basin, which is right in the middle of the driveway opening now. But again, all of this is existing. We're trying to make it better. We, we don't want to make it any worse than what it is.
Yeah, and I agree with you. It's really the issue about parking.
It is.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome, Mr. Malovich. Thank you, Bob. Uh, any other board members have questions?
Mr. Chairman, I just have a couple of questions.
Sure, go right ahead, please.
I was curious, do you have a date for the Board of Appeals meeting?
I do. I believe it's the eleventh of January. I had...
Okay, so it's coming up.
Yeah, I, I think that's in Fran's notes, that it's on for January eleventh.
Yes.
Yeah, that we received from Fran, yeah.
Great, thank you. Um, yeah, I guess, I just feel that, um, you know, it's going to the Board of Appeals just, uh, in the next week. And it seems like, you know, the floor plans and the site plans both seem a little bit underdeveloped from my perspective. Um, and like you said, they were changing out of last week. So, that's, that's really my comment, that they're not really accurately representing what's being done to the property. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just to follow up on what you made, uh, said, is I don't think we have plans to really vote on, uh, this evening. It's, um, and I applaud the applicant for, for wanting to rehabilitate the building.
Um, and obviously, I think it's going to be an improvement.
But, um, if we're voting on site plan, uh, you know, we don't have anything relative to landscaping. They mentioned something about raised plantings. We don't see that. We're not quite sure how the parking's going to lay out, if they're going to... So, it is, is really, uh, it's an incomplete plan as it is for us. Um, I do, you know, it's, it's funny, the, the building does have some, some real architectural features that, uh, are interesting. And I think, uh, you know, add to the, 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 um, I, I think the interesting facade of the building. I, I, I saw the renderings. Are you going, you know, over the, the, the eaves of the building, uh, you know, it's got some nice architectural features? What extent are you going to try to, uh, incorporate any of those existing, uh, architectural features, or are they worth keeping at this point, based on the condition? I'm just curious.
We would certainly try to keep all of the architectural features. The cornice work there is probably the building's best feature at this time.
I believe so, yeah.
I absolutely do, and I'm not sure what happened. But we try to keep the building, I want to say like it is, we want to make it a lot better than what it is. We try to bring it back to what it once was and to make it look good.
Yeah, see, what I, what I'm concerned is the renderings that were provided to us really just eliminates all of that and just, um... You know, really shows it as a, almost like a modern facelift and, and not really take into account what's, what's already there. So, I'm just a little concerned with the renderings that were presented. So, I'd like to have really a better description of, 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 uh, what you're planning to do for the exterior of the building. And, uh, I think it was commented, it was in the comments too, is, is what the material is that you're going to do. Um, you know, I, I just think that there's, there are some parts of that that are worth preserving. I think it will, it will add to the, the overall appeal of the, of the building.
I, Mr. Chairman, I'd be more than happy to get a more detailed set of renderings. And as for the material, we use almost exclusively hardy siding, the cement board. It's much more durable than vinyl and lasts a lot longer.
Sure, sure. That seems to be a common material these days. Um, yeah, so I'd like to see really the, the, a, a more, uh, refined site plan for us to vote on. I'd like to see some better details as to the exterior renovation of the building. Um, and, uh, I, I think it's going to be important as to how it comes through the Zoning Board of Appeals hearing. Uh, and then, I, I think come back, it comes back to us, but I think, uh, uh, a more complete plan for us to vote on for site plan review and the special permit. That, that would be, uh, that would be my thoughts on, uh, on the application, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Bichette.
If I could just add to Jerry's comment, um, I think, I think he would agree, updated floor plans also that accurately reflect the bedroom count, because I think what we're seeing, um, would require even more parking spaces than what you're suggesting. Thanks.
Good point, absolutely.
Good point. Thank you. Um, any, Russell, any comments?
I just wanted to add that I, I just generally agree with a lot of, um, the other members, that I, I would not feel comfortable taking a vote on this without the, without a more updated set of plans.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, the concern I have is the parking. Um, I know you can get, even if you get a variance from the Board of Appeals, you still have to satisfy us on the site plan review and the special permit. And by looking at your parking layout, um, doesn't look to me like it's going to work. So, I have grave concerns about the parking, but that's my comment.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, could, could I just add one thing, is if, if it would be possible for the applicant, uh, even working with DPD, is to do some sort of a, um, and we've done this before, some sort of a survey as to what's available for on-street parking? I think that would be, that would be helpful.
Yeah, because it's tough, especially with that being an intersection, you know?
Yeah.
It's a busy intersection as well, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman. One of the points, when the surveyor had suggested that we open the curb cut, we would then be losing off the parking on that side.
Yeah.
We'd try not to make an impact, a negative effect on the neighbors.
Yeah. Hey, do we have any further comments? If not, what's the wish of the board?
There's additional comment, Mr. Chairman.
Go on, Mr. Lockout, right ahead.
Uh, regarding your parking area, um, you're going to have to address how you're going to handle trash and, and any communication with, um, solid waste and recycling, and how that whole thing is going to fit into your plan as well. You got to make sure that that's on there. That's all.
Thank you, Adrian.
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I could just ask the applicant, so you, you have, uh, you, you're on the schedule for the January eleventh Zoning Board of Appeals meeting?
Yes.
My question to you is, depending upon what comes out of that meeting, if there's any revisions that they're looking for, um, I really, I, I do not want to, I would prefer not to see you come back here with, uh, without, um, a plan that reflects whatever comes to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Our next meeting is January twenty-first. Would that, if you, that's ten days, would that give you an ample amount of time to actually have an updated, uh, plot plan? And by the way, a plot plan by a, um, not a surveyor, but a, a, an engineer.
Civil engineer, yeah.
Yeah, civil engineer.
Yeah, right.
Um, and, um, so I, I just, just asked the question if that, that, like I said, in, in some sort of a landscape design, I think would be, would be helpful, uh, as, um, as you try to incorporate much the spirit of setbacks and, uh, snow storage or snow removal, whatever the plan's going to be for that as well, for parking, some of the parking that's going to happen. So, I'd just like to see that come back to us, you know, definitive plan on paper for us to vote on.
Absolutely, sir. We are working on updated plans for the Board of Appeals. Again, we just retained another attorney, I'm attorney, another engineer last week. So, ideally, we would have the same set of plans for you to look at, so that each board is looking at the same set. That would be the best thing.
If there are any revisions that come out of the Zoning Board of Appeals meeting, do you think that would be sufficient time for you to make that in?
I think so, unless, unless it's a major change. I mean...
Plus, also keep in mind that any revision you'd have to give to, um, planning staff, and then we have to submit them to all the other, um... um, agencies that review the plan and a timely minute to get them back to us. So therefore we still have to send them over, you know, to the, um, stormwater, traffic and ev- everybody else who's involved. So you're going to have to, you know, the fire department and all those people, so you're going to have to get comments back from all the other seven agencies that we deal with. So you're talking about, you have a revision, giving up to all the department heads, get their plan, get it back to us. So you're really getting a short window of up, of opportunity, which Mr. Bichette is alluding to.
I, I understand completely. And again, if the zoning board requires a major revision, then we may not be able to meet the January twenty-first deadline.
That's the question as well. If you want the twenty-first, we can go to the next meeting, which will be the first meeting in February. And therefore we have space for somebody else to make the agenda on the twenty-first.
Why don't we do that, sir? This project has been hanging here for a couple of years. We're in great harmony.
Yeah, we just want to make sure you have adequate time to adjust everything and then make sure we get plenty of feedback. Plus, um, with our staff right now for planning and development, a short staff, due to the fact of, uh, with, within the process of hiring some people and just putting a lot in position on our staff and obviously they, they have to attend all these meetings and, uh, do their notes and compare everything. So it would give everybody a little more time to digest everything as well. And if it comes out to be just the same plan, then easier for you. Um, at least this way, um, and everybody has a chance to look at any, what happens at the, at the, uh, Board of Appeals and obviously, if, if you don't get a favorable reply on the parking, um, I'm not sure if you'll be back before us again in the, you know, for the next meeting, uh, whatever your plan would be. Um, or you'd have to do something for parking though. I don't know.
So based on that, Mr. Chairman and, and to the applicant, uh, I would make a motion to continue the hearing until the February first Planning Board meeting. That will give you ample, ample time to write a, a, uh, whole set of plans for you to consider.
Is that what the first meeting is, Jerry? February one?
February one, yes.
Uh, Chairman, I have one thing to ask, uh,
Sure.
if you don't mind before the motion.
Absolutely, Caleb, anytime.
So, uh, I want to ask the applicant whether staff have mentioned about, um, alternatives like more sustainable transportation options. If it's a, uh, kind of a, uh, another way to work around the parking issues. And staff had noted in the comment that it's one-third of a mile from the Gallagher Station. And so, uh, and also Paul, well, it's not that farther away from downtown, so, uh, I want to hear if you, you have any plans to, uh, pursue that such as including some bike, uh, parking or, uh, along that line or on the lease, like if there is a certain discount. I, I, I remember one project that we, we, um, reapproved, uh, in the, uh, on, the one on, uh, Middle Sack Street, uh, have some, uh, ca- uh, I think they are apartments too, and they certainly do not have enough parking, even though they have, uh, the city garage not too far from them, but they also have a transportation, um, management plan in place. So I want to hear if there's anything in that, uh, in the working or have you considered that?
I absolutely, give me one second, uh. I apologize, I can't find the letter. The, uh, the parking came up from Mr. Fuller that there, there was parking within walking distance. Uh, please let me get that to you. I don't want to waste your time looking for it.
No problem. If you could have it for the next meeting, you know, that way it'd be more than adequate to prepare. That's fine. But, you know, what Caleb is saying, is there any alternative to, to the parking? Would you have any place to put a bike rack or something of that nature or just something to concern the future?
Oh, of course. You could certainly do a bike rack and again, I did walk around the neighborhood looking for available spots to see if I could buy a couple of parking spaces.
Yeah, so sometimes people lease them whatever, but yeah, that's, you know, that's what's happened in other sites in the past, you know? Um, they try to set up a lease if need be, right? And actually someone back central that we've done in the past went to those tight Navajo Street.
Yeah, I, I thought there had to be a deeded space. I didn't realize leasing was of.
No, leasing is an option, sir. Yeah. So, yeah, we've done that before. What we usually do is try to get a agreement, you know, and then try to see how well it is, yeah.
Perfect. I'll certainly look into that.
Good luck on that. Wish you well. Caleb, are you satisfied with the response for that? Have we moved forward with the motion?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Are you back to the motion?
All right, so to make the motion, Mr. Bichette was to continue the matter to February, to our February first twenty, twenty-one meeting. Do we have a second on that matter?
Oh, second motion, Mr. Chairman.
I think it was Mr. Malovich made, made the second on that one? Okay, so motion's made and second all in favor, say aye.
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 Chair, vote aye, so that motion is approved. Good luck, sir, and we'll see you on February first.
Thank you very much.
Welcome, sir. Have a good night. Hey, let's see. Moving along on the agenda. We have, um, site plan review and special permit for fifty-nine Loews Way. Assured Testing Laboratories LLC has applied to the Planning Board to open marijuana testing laboratory at the above address. The property is in the high-rise commercial zoning district and requires special permit under section twelve point eight F in site plan review under eleven point four for the proposed marijuana use. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Yes. Good evening, everyone, and Happy New Year to you all. Uh, happy to be here tonight. Uh, if, with the permission of the board, I'd like to share my screen. I have a small presentation, uh, to summarize some of the points.
That'd be excellent. Thank you, sir. And your name again, I'm sorry?
Uh, yes, uh, my name is Dr. Demetrius Pelakoudis.
Thank you, sir.
And I am the CEO of, uh, Assured Testing Laboratories, so.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll start off this presentation here. Give me a moment. Can everyone see my arrow here?
I can.
Yes.
Anybody else, okay?
I'm just going to hide people's faces here. Okay, uh, thank you, everyone, uh, esteemed board members, uh, chairman, uh, representatives from City Hall, uh, as well as board members of Assured Testing Lab, which are in attendance today and ownership of the property. I, I see we have a representative here as well. Uh, thank you all for attending this, uh, public hearing for Assured Testing Laboratories LLC. Uh, we are, as I mentioned, proposing a cannabis establishment, uh, which is an independent testing lab. And I will divulge further the details of our application. Um, first of all, why are we doing this? Uh, and this is where there is a dire need within Massachusetts. Uh, to date in Massachusetts, there have been four vaping deaths and over a hundred confirmed or probably probable cases of lung injury from specifically THC vaping. Uh, for those who are within the medical pharmaceutical community, as I have been, uh, it, it is not actually nicotine vaping that these have been linked to, but actually, uh, marijuana vaping cartridges that were made, uh, outside of the regulated, uh, industry. And one of the reasons that people turn to these regulated industries, I'm sorry, unregulated industries, uh, is because of lack of available product, high prices, et cetera. And one of the ways that we can help mitigate this is by having safe product, uh, put onto the market that we ensure the safety by having a testing lab ensure that anything that is produced within this state is of safe and legal quality. Currently, there are only three independent testing laboratories in all of Massachusetts for recreational cannabis safety certification, such as what we are seeking to, uh, to provide service for. Licenses are continuing to be issued, uh, while lab capacity has not expanded, uh, to handle this. Uh, to give the board an idea and for those of the public, when Colorado was at a similar size of licensure and available locations of production, they had twelve laboratories that were up and running. And even then, that was not enough. So we're, we're looking to help put a dent in this. And why us? Uh, why me? Uh, that I'm pursuing this, uh, in particular. Uh, I recently graduated from Northeastern University in a PhD in pharmaceutical science. Uh, and my research specifically was in cannabinoids, so understanding how it works, uh, understanding what it's made of, understanding what we can do to analyze it and keep it safe. Uh, what's more is I have a background where I've previously worked for a pharmaceutical company such as Novartis and Genzyme, uh, which is now a Sanofi, uh, acquisition, uh, in the pharmaceutical industry. And I've learned there that there is a gold standard that lots of the practices that people fear in these new industries, um, those lessons have already been learned and we, we would like to not repeat the mistakes that happened in the past and bring this gold standard, bless you, uh, to our industry. What's more is one of my initial positions out, out of my bachelor's, which I received from Salem State University, uh, was in food safety and regulatory experience out of a place called Charm Sciences, which is actually closer to Lowell. This is in Lawrence. And they work on dairy analytics. And i- it's interesting that not a lot of us think that there is such a level of regulatory that's in our own backyard, uh, to, to really take care of this. So I have the background, I have the experience and looking to bring it to the cannabis industry so that that way we can have, you know, if it, if it's going to be legal, let's make it safe.
Right.
Uh, so speaking to the location, uh, here I have a, uh, mildly dated site plan, uh, that was provided to us. Uh, but we were unclear that we needed a site plan review until later on in the process here, but we were happy to oblige to the best of our ability. Uh, I have circled here, uh, in, with this black circle, the actual building itself that we would be housed within for fifty-nine Loews Way. Uh, ample parking is available for other businesses. Uh, it is set apart from much of the traffic and infrastructure in, in the area. Uh, within our letter of intent with ownership, we have been designated thirty, uh, spaces for our business itself. I believe that there is a, uh, one parking space per thousand square feet, which in this case is a ten thousand square feet roughly, uh, unit. So we're three times above that and we're very grateful to ownership for having reached that deal together. Uh, what's more is what are we looking to actually build here? Uh, we do not plan on having any distinct signage. We, we like to say the phrase that we are a bronze plate on a building. Uh, we are not a billboard because we do not want to draw attention to ourselves. It, that could potentially bring a negative outlook to not just the area, but the town or anything like that. As there are some that, uh, are not as approving to, to cannabis use. So should we associate ourselves with that? We want to be as low profile, but still taking care of our, our citizens, uh, with, within the Commonwealth. Uh, what's more is to, to this nature, uh, in order to actually acquire our samples for testing, uh, these will be in unmarked cars that will be used to, uh, go and pick them up from, from the customers. So there will be no distinct markings to, to indicate, hey, we are here, come here. We, we don't want to be bothering the populace so much with that. Uh, our, our customers will, will know where we are. Uh, what's more is to, uh, comply with state regulations and, uh, local zoning ordinances. I, I have provided here, uh, using Google Maps, a five hundred and thousand foot radius here. I believe the, the ordinance says that there cannot be another cannabis establishment within, uh, a thousand feet of the building and there cannot be any type of school within five hundred feet of the building, which as shown here and in the documentation that was provided to the board, there, there is nothing, uh, wi- within the area to, to, uh, break that ordinance. So we, we do not require any type of variance on that. Um, and what's more is how, how does our actual operation work once we are up and running and functional? Uh, the state has mandated that every ten pounds of product, uh, that is produced by either cultivators or manufacturers have a representative sample, uh, that is required for testing. Now, what type of testing? You know, people think that, oh, well, marijuana, it has an active ingredient. Uh, this active ingredient, for those who don't know, is known as, uh, tetrahydrocannabinol or THC. Uh, another active ingredient is CBD, which CBD can also come from hemp and can, and we see that a lot more frequently in unregulated, uh, facilities and marketing. Uh, but that aside, it is still an agricultural field. And there are other tests that need to be taken into account to ensure safety. As we all know, certain, uh, manufact- cultivators of certain agricultural, uh, yields require pesticides. What's more is within the water itself can be heavy metals, uh, and what's more is bacteria can grow, et cetera. So these are the number of things that we would be testing. Uh, and this test only requires a representative, representative sample between one to three grams. Uh, at capacity, our lab would have no more than about two to three times the household limit, which the legal household limit right now is about ten ounces, which if you convert that to grams is two hundred and eighty-three grams. So we, we very much want to have a rapid turnaround of our samples to where we are collecting the samples, processing them, testing them, and through that process, they become destroyed. Uh, so we, we don't take on more than we have to so that that way we can, uh, keep the volume low and we can have good turnover for, uh, positive results. To that end, where will we be actually bringing these? Uh, all samples will be stored in a secure freezer room. Here I have shown an, a, uh, cropped version of our test fit plan, which has been provided to the board. And several layers of security, uh, have been established, both physically and will be estab- established within our security practices that has been provided to the, to the board, which I have not gone into detail here, uh, for obvious security reasons. Um, however, we, we've implemented these things, so even though we are dealing with such a small sample volume, we still treat it to the highest caliber of security and protection and caution. Uh, so as you see, people would come in through the, through the reception, uh, and no matter which way they go, whether they go through any of the other doors, which all will have keypad access, all of which will be under stringent, uh, camera security. Uh, there are secondary vestibules or secondary areas that, that are needed to be traversed before actually reaching the, it's labeled here, production, but this is actually where we will be processing our samples to then, to then be, uh, tested. And these samples, as I mentioned, would largely be held within, uh, secure and locked freezers. Uh, and these freezers, what's more is upon, why are we putting them in freezers? Um, let me, let me get a bit to our workflow here. So first, we have sample retrieval following standard chain of custody under camera, and that includes with our cars as well. We plan on having camera surveillance, uh, of, of the material at all times. Uh, preparation and extraction make the samples unsuitable for consumption. We put them into a minus eighty degrees Celsius freezer, making it extremely brittle where even to the smallest touch, it would break apart. What's more is when, then we take that, grind it up and put it into an organic solvent. That organic solvent is specifically chosen and in very small volumes. Uh, so that way we are mitigating our impact on the environment that any chemicals that we use are kept to a bare minimum. Uh, and that makes it completely unusable, uh, for any type of consumption. It is then put through our analytical instruments, uh, as shown in this diagram here. And then our results from our analysis go to our reports, which are reported not only to the customer, but also to the state. Uh, and that is an automated process that, uh, happens electronically through a standard service that the state has commissioned. Uh, any potential waste or carryover or leftover of, of the product is carefully collected and securely stored. That then it, we would bring in an outside vendor, which I have given one example of a quote we have obtained from a local, uh, waste disposal vendor. Uh, and these waste disposal vendors are, this, this is very bread and butter to them, to where they go through and they are processing these in order to recycle as much of the material as possible. And by material, I mean the chemicals, the actual, uh, organic solvent so that they could potentially be used again. And at, again, uh, give us much less of an impact on our environment. Uh, having gone to Salem State University, they really beat into me what we call green chemistry, where we want to be as green to our environment as possible in all of what we do. So small volumes, recycling our waste and doing the best we can moving forward. Um, and with that, uh, I want to close with, uh, our mission before I open to questions. That our mission as an independent testing lab is to assure our customers and by extension, the world of consumers, that all of our tested products are of the highest caliber for quality and safety. We strive to be leaders in our field of testing and maintain a vigilant and cutting-edge approach in all of our practices. Uh, with that, I open up to the board and, and to the continuation of these proceedings and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Um, will any el- anybody else be speaking up on, on your behalf with your, um, for the application tonight? If not, I'm going to turn it over to the public first, then the planning board members will have some questions.
I don't believe anyone else in our group is planning, planning on speaking, but I am thankful for them being here to support.
Okay, and if I, any questions come up from the board, if you want to refer to any of them as well as yourself, feel free, okay?
Thank you very much.
Okay, so at this point in time, I'm going to open up to the public to see if anybody, um, watching this evening would like to, um, be heard on these matters. So basically I'll start off with anybody in favor of the project. Anybody this evening in favor? In favor? Anybody listening want to speak in favor? If not, we have anybody in opposition? Anybody in opposition? In opposition, in opposition? In opposition, in opposition? Hearing none at this point in time? I'll turn it over to the board members to see if they have any questions, comments, whichever. Any of the board members have any questions?
Um Chairman, I have a question.
Go right ahead, please, Caleb.
Um well, thank you for the application uh uh doctor and and uh I I want to point to the radius map that you created because I clearly remember that we have a marijuana facility uh permitted for twenty-eight Wellman Street, which would be put it within the thousand square like feet buffer. So uh I wouldn't check with um check on that, but I maybe with the help of our staff to to double check whether this might mean you have to go to a CBA for a variance.
If I could address that, please. Uh if you look within the packet that was provided to the board, uh one of the things that was provided was a um it was multiple maps in there. So not just the one that I uh showed this evening. If I could just pull it up, please.
Sure, thank you. Yeah, because we approved the um, one of the fir- first ones we approved for um manufacturing was on Wellman Street.
Right.
That was, remember after we approved that, after we approved all those apartments down the end of the street? Remember, Richard?
Yeah, I know.
Remember we had all, remember that project we had that faced the highway and everything? Then coming right up the street and it's right next to the other ma- matter that we had on tonight that was continued.
Mr. Chairman, that that building is right on the radius measurements that are gonna he's gonna bring up on the on the map. It's right in that that circle of a thousand feet.
Okay. Sure, go ahead, sir.
I'll I'll share my screen again.
Yeah, thank you.
Oh, this one.
I'll take your time.
Yep. So let let's bring up just the radius for a moment and where where exactly are are we speaking here?
We're talking about Wellman Street, which would be um.
At the top of that, at the top of that uh map.
Up here?
Right there, that that building, that road that goes right to, right where your uh arrow is, you can see the drive that goes right to that building that's right, right there.
This right here?
Yep.
Interesting, because when I when I go back to the marijuana zoning ordinance, which was provided to me by the city, uh this right here is just something that I covered up. Uh the only current facilities that that are here are are slotted i- in in these red dots right here. Um Francesca, I be- I believe you're on the call here. Um do you happen to have the actual note about what is the exact measurement within the zoning ordinance uh for another marijuana establishment?
I can pull up the language from the marijuana ordinance.
So.
I believe it's a five hundred foot buffer. I may I may have.
Let me just, because um the project that we had on for earlier tonight that we continued, that was on, what, eighteen Wellman Street? And the re- the the one for the manufacturing was actually to the right of that, but there's a drive that goes in that goes down a little bit.
Yeah, it's that building, he's up and right over this, if it's a thousand, if it's five hundred feet, he's outside of the radius, but thousand feet.
Puts it in, yeah.
It is, it is a thousand feet. I just pulled it up and it's five hundred feet uh within. But I mean, a- and it's just barely there, so I don't know where we exactly draw the line. Because this is, again, this is something that I I rendered just using Google Maps. Uh and it depending on where you put the epicenter, if you move the epicenter back eve- even a hundred feet, we're we're outside of that that thousand foot radius.
I think if you look at um se- section seven point ten point four, five C, that's will put it within it because you're measuring from property line to property line. So we can't use the epic center, we have to use the property line, which closes to uh each other.
I would also be a little bit skeptical of the Google Maps version as opposed to getting um a version created by a civil engineer. Just um based on your image, it looks like an oval, not a circle. Um so I just wanted to point that out too, so.
Yeah, I I made sure that the measurements, I I made sure that the measurements of diameter across the board were uh precise u- using a measurement tool. Uh so i- i- it's weird, i- it gives you that distortion shape because it's within a rectangular picture. So i- it's a mild optical illusion, but to be sure, this is something that we can we can explore going forward. Um yeah, that we we were unaware that there was another facility that had been given uh permit. And I had been in constant contact with uh the planning office uh as as to this, and we were told that there would be no issue. So I genuinely surprised to have this have this brought up.
Fran, do you have any communication on that or anything you'd say, or do you need more time to look into that or?
Um I would need more time. What I'm wondering is whether um so I do see in the ordinance, um it explicitly says that no recreational marijuana retail facilities shall be within one thousand feet of another presently existing or permitted marijuana dispensary or recreational retail facility. Uh but I don't see any language about one thousand feet, having that one thousand foot buffer from any marijuana uses. It seems like it's specific to retail um based on my read. Um but to be sure, I would need to.
Yeah, so the question would be whether this be in a testing lab, there's not be, you know, and and the other facility is a manufacturer and not a recreational faci- I mean, not a um distribution facility, I meant to say?
Right, uh because Demetrius worked with um Eric and to obtain his host community agreement, um which was before.
So maybe we can get some feedback from Eric on that as well then?
Right, yeah.
Okay, okay.
I I will say that I have walked this path before uh in Boston, trying to seek approval.
Yeah.
A- and there a- as they they are looking to get their feet wet in this as well, they recently established a Boston Cannabis Board. Um a lot of this comes down to what is within the actual zoning ordinance within the musi- municipality. So if it does use, a- and we had pleaded with Boston there to ask them to give us uh special dispensation as there is a dire need for laboratory testing, to put us as separate. There are a number of uh cases, such as in Oregon, in Maine, in Colorado, i- in a number of different states where this has been the case because there is such a dire need, that it comes down to the municipality that that as long as it is defined within the zoning and it does not specify uh labs, then within the letter of the law, uh the way that we interpret it, then we we should be allowed within there. The big one that the state requires is based on the schools, which I believe that's probably where that five hundred foot buffer has has come in, which clearly we we do not run into issues o- on that aspect. Um so to to that end, I I would ask that since we are within within the board here, we would like to move forward uh at with with this need. Since we have the um we have the highlight of the of the zoning ordinance, that it does specify, and I'll read it off again, one thousand feet, eh no recreational marijuana retail facility shall be within one thousand feet of another presently existing or permitted marijuana dispensary or recreational retail facility. Once more is even had a a zoning permit been given, uh oh, sorry, I I won't go down that train of thought. But so a- a- as it does not highlight testing labs, then i- it is our belief that by by the letter of the law, we are exempt from from that zoning.
Mr. Chairman, to it to the applicant's point too, if you can recall, this board did approve two facilities right on Dutton Street. I think you could throw a rock and hit one uh, you know, standing across the street. They're almost diagonally across from each other, if you recall that, uh but.
Yeah, because because they were ma- manufacturer, right?
Correct, yeah.
Instead of a dispensary.
Neither one of them was a retail, yeah.
Okay, yeah, yeah, good point, Jerry, yeah. Yeah.
I feel comfortable moving forward. Obviously, we would put a caveat for for final, final clarification, but I would have no.
Hmm, yeah. Um I think obviously, as the gentleman mentioned, you know, the intent of the um ordinance is basically very clear about keep it away from schools, and I think we all understand that purpose.
Oh, yeah.
You know, I mean.
I have eleven-year-old daughter and I I definitely understand that aspect of things as a parent.
Yeah, I mean, you know, and you know, it's it's like um, you know, like um um you have like um drug laws to stay away from schools and parks, you know, which are better enforceable. And then they even limited those from a thousand feet down to five hundred. But you can understand the reason why, so people weren't trying to sell their products in those uh zoning areas where people could be young people, you know, we could um get in trouble from that area, so.
Of course, and and that speaks further to what we said previously. You know, we are a bronze plaque, not a billboard. We do not want to uh be promoting any type of uh a- a- any type of use. But it, like we said, if it's gonna be legal, let's make it safe. That's all we're here for.
Plus, where you are, you you're on the fourth floor, am I correct on that?
That is correct.
Application, so you're not ground level as well, which um so it keeps you further distance away, right?
And and the last I checked, I I believe that the FBI are tenants within the building as well.
Well, when you put up your circle radius there, they pop right up next to you.
Right, right.
And then, of course, over at Crosspoint, you have the Lowell Police Academy, which is part of the academy. So uh the Lowell Police have offices in in Crosspoint Towers there.
Righto.
Which body falls within certain radius period, so. Um okay, so if we wanna move on from that, anybody else have any further questions? Um other board members will pick up on that, but that was a good point brought up by Caleb. So um Caleb, I'll I'll refer back to you if you still have any more comments.
Oh, I do. Um and our question is that our uh our board has been a uh very, I would say, careful on is uh is odor mitigation. And I understand from your narrative that uh the standard lab fumhood uh will be used. Now, from s- a little bit of my background in on campus planning, my understanding it's uh uh the fumhood typically do not scrub uh odor. Uh I I I have some understanding that they they have rented out um on the roof so that it's on a not on ground level and use a dispersion kind of uh method to to uh uh keep the uh, I say, uh potentially dangerous chemical away from from the public. But then um I I I'll, I think uh this board would still be concerned if there is any trace of um marijuana odor that will get uh, I would say, um get to and maybe another neighborhood downs- down- downwind from from your facility. So I want to ask if you have any provision in addition to um a regular lab, standard lab of fumhood.
Yes, I'd be happy to speak on that. Uh I believe in our general overview that we sent to the board, one of the details that I mentioned is because we are using an organic solvent uh it to uh neutralize the actual product. And what's more, let me reiterate, the small quantities that we would be using, both freezing and putting it into the organic solvent uh changes the vapor pressure of the odorant. Uh so this is the technical term that is what reaches our nose, because it has to be a certain density for it to rise higher than the air. Uh so just from a mechanistic standpoint of our process, we're already mitigating a lot of the odor. Because what's more is I don't wanna go and work in a lab and come out smelling like limonene a- and all of those other chemicals that that produce the smell that is from cannabis. Uh that that's me personally. But as far as for uh local downstream and things like that, uh they, I I don't know when um I I don't know when you you were working with these fumhoods. Definitely some of the fumhoods that I worked with at Salem State did not have these uh much more updated filters to be able to process these things. And this also helps choose what type of hood we will be choosing. So when we get to our actual engineering, uh one one of the potential types of hoods that we were looking at were simple tabletop ones that, you know, are ductless, that don't actually go uh out. And unfortunately, because of the type of solvent that we're using, that is not suitable for the type of filters that are that are built in there. So briefly, yes, i- i- yes, there is odor mitigation built into these hoods. Uh but we ensure to go above and beyond that through the small sample size, through the freezing and through the specific organic solvents that we are using to help mitigate a lot a lot of the potential smell issue that this could produce. And what's more is because of the small sample size, you spoke to a certain dilution factor uh that happens upon dispersion into the air, you know. A good gust of wind, you know, if if they were somehow able to compress it and shoot it, you might get a smell for two seconds. It it's not something that can that can last pervasively, especially because of the type of processing that we're gonna end up doing. Um it's not something that would that would linger in the air or and be out and about. Um because we also don't want it lingering, even if you were to bring it outside of the hood hypothetically, I don't want it lingering on my clothes. When I come home, my wife would kill me.
Oh, thank you for the explanation. Um I will let the other board members uh to to uh to discuss on that further if uh if there is still a concern. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh any other board members have questions, comments?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have.
Mr. Lockhart?
Uh one item, uh our documentation indicates that uh the fire department has approved the application on December eighteenth, twenty twenty, uh that you will be required to provide a list of hazardous materials being stored and used at the facilities. Uh and there was another um document from Clean Management Environmental Group with a quotation for flammable solvents. Uh they're just kinda put up a flag in my mind. Um have you had further discussion with the fire department specifically about storing flammables and that type of chemical? I know they, a lot of times uh the codes will require like explosion-proof facilities and really specialty stuff. Can you just give us a rundown on where you stand with that? That's, you know, an important thing to cover in terms of just warehousing and storing.
Of course, I'd be happy to. Yeah, so uh as uh we have not spoken directly with the fire department. We sent them our proposed plan. Um but I am very happy that you brought this up. We we love putting this on the record. Uh it is standard practice, or at least it should be, for every single lab that ha- handles any type of hazardous chemical, that they provide a list of uh hazardous hazardous chemicals within material safety and data sheets. Uh and so we we most certainly will put a comprehensive list together once we are uh purchasing these. So even before obtaining these, we we get them, we add them to the list, and we notify the appropriate authorities that, yes, we will be carrying these. Uh as far as the actual storage of these, very standard practice for us to purchase uh these uh what some people call uh explosion-proof, uh flame-retardant, uh et- et cetera. The eh so the t- the levels of organic solvents that we will be holding, the largest volumes that are actually produced are not so much for processing the samples uh themselves or doing the extraction, as we call it. But actually just running of our machines, they they run on these uh organic solvents. You know, ethanol, methanol, things like that. Uh and typically, they they are diluted uh before they are used, so we dilute them with uh pure water. Uh but going going forward, just just to say, we we expect to have, you know, two to three of these cabinets, and these cabinets are no longer than, eh no larger than a refrigerator. They're actually half the size of a standard, you know, top and bottom refrigerator. Uh I've I've worked with these all all of my scientist career. Um ve- very standard, very easy to come by. And of course, anything that gets built has to be to code, otherwise we don't get doors open. Uh does that answer your question completely enough, Mr. Lockhart?
Yes, it does. I think it's maybe run up with the saying that, uh, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, Richard?
No, that'll be all, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Richard. Any other board members?
Chairman, I just have one clarification.
Sure, go right ahead, Stan.
Um I just wanna confirm that it's um an interior fit out and that there's no work being done to this. I I know you talked about the parking and there's ample parking. Um and more specifically, is um loading of the products gonna be going through the um loading dock that's indicated on the site plan?
That is an excellent question. Uh we have not determined the precise route. Uh that is something that we need to talk with ownership over as what they are most comfortable with. Uh we do want it to be under recorded surveillance at all times. Uh but when I say the sample's coming through, it's less of something that needs to come in through a loading dock as the actual container that would contain these looks effectively like your standard construction lunch cooler. Uh and that it would have a lock on it that would only be able to be uh. Uh, and that it would have a lock on it that would only be able to be uh, opened uh, under, under camera surveillance, both either in the car when loading it or uh, in, in the lab upon retrieval. So uh, yes, we are only planning on doing interior renovation to this. We are not looking to change the existing site. We're, we're one suite in a large billion, building. Um, which is why we, we were sort of confused when we had to put the whole site plan uh, together, because we, we're not looking to change anything. We think it's a beautiful site, uh, frankly. Uh, yeah, I, I couldn't have imagined a better one. Um, yeah, does, does that answer your question well enough?
That does, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I just have one question.
Go on, Mr. Bell, but you go right ahead, Bob.
There was a mention in the information we got about a director of security who is going to be hired and to replace the owner as the temporary director of security. Do you know when that's gonna be, that the position's going to be filled? And at what time, you know, is it at opening or is it beyond that?
Of course, I, I'd be happy to answer that. Uh, we put together our security plan, uh, having contracted a gentleman by the name of Matt Goodwell. Uh, Mr. Goodwell offered his services as a temporary director of security if we needed him uh, upon the opening. We have not engaged his service as our temporary director of security as of yet. Uh, as frankly, frankly, I'm fresh out of grad school and we're trying, trying to cut costs here as best as we can un- until we get doors open. Once we get doors open, we wanna make sure that we are, you know, the, the pinnacle of, of a good lab. Uh, but that said, before any product comes into contact with our hands and into, into our lab, we want, we want to ensure that we do hire a full-time director of security. So prior to opening is what our goal is. Uh, we have not engaged in any of our employment services as of yet, because we are still working our way through uh, uh, this understandable bureaucratic process. Uh, and upon clearance of, of those, uh, when we do get our full approvals, which we, we hope we're able to do uh, through this meeting, then uh, we, we would begin hitting the ground running and, and put out applications for uh, positions such as these and so on.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other board members have any comments? Russell, Jerry?
Chairman, if I may, um, just to the applicant, I don't know if it was communicated to you, a, an email from uh, uh, stormwater Mike Stewart regarding um, the um, stormwater permit mitigation that they were looking for on site. And I, I think what they're looking for is um, to, to uh, provide some uh, information regarding the amount of space uh, that you're occupying, so to come up with a proportionate uh, uh, amount of stormwater mitigation, which is really going to be on the owner of the building. Uh, so I don't know if that's been communicated to you in any way.
Uh, it was passed over to me. Thank, thank you, uh, sir. Uh, it, it was passed over to me and I have forwarded to, to ownership. Uh, it being the fourth, everybody's just gotten uh, ba- back up into business. But I, I'm certain as a, an excellent um, landholder uh, wi- within, within the city, they'd be happy to comply with anything uh, there. And we are happy to work with them in order to achieve this at, to the best of our ability. We were kind of unclear as to how this pertains to us directly. As we mentioned, since we are not editing anything outside of the building, we're only changing things within the building. If they're looking for our potential water consumption, uh, I don't have an exact figure, but I, I am sure that we can calculate that, estimate that on, once we reach that. Um, but as I mentioned before, this is something that most of our waste, if not all of our waste, will be going into uh, con- their safe containers that will be taken away by an outside vendor. So we wouldn't really be adding so much to additional water that would be coming out of the building. Of course, we would, you know, use the bathrooms a- as standard practices would be. Uh, you know, you, you use the faucets for, you know, when, when you're rinsing your dishes. Uh, but past that, we wouldn't re- really be using large amounts of uh, of water that would add to the storm drain.
Yeah, without, without, without speaking for them, I, I suspect when they, based on the standards, when that property was first built, um, it, that, you know, it doesn't comply with today's standards. And if in fact you got an applicant uh, looking for a special permit uh, and it requires site plan, this is an opportunity to at least address some of that. And I, I suspect that is the, the motivation behind that is, friend, does that sound about right from your understanding?
Correct, yes.
Yeah. Um, if, if you could, just so I can understand, this is very unique, uh, what you're, what you're doing here. Who exactly is your customer? So are you going to go to the cultivation facilities? Are you going to go to retail shops? Just curious as to, who are your customers?
So just to clarify, we do not deal with any of the retail shops themselves, but we help the retail shops in a way. Uh, in my graphic that I presented earlier, and I can pull that up to help with this. Can we see the workflow here?
Sure.
Or, sorry, this, this is the one, the how it works.
Okay.
Okay, so what we do is we go to the cultivators and the manufacturers specifically. And it's when they are done cultivating or they are done manufacturing, for every ten pounds of product, uh, they require, the state requires a representative sample be sent to uh, a lab such as ours. And we would do the test, and the wholesalers and the retailers are not able to take into possession any of that material until they are given a certificate of analysis from a lab such as ours that deems it a safe item. Uh, what's more is I'd like to say while we are pursuing, uh, and because I believe in transparency and openness and what we're trying to do here, uh, cannabis is what we are looking to get our start in. It, because we believe that as a testing lab, it is our responsibility to help multiple markets and multiple areas. Um, because a lab such as ours is perfectly poised to be able to help in a number of areas that do not technically require a special permit. But uh, as we're dealing with in agriculture, uh, there's no reason for us to not branch into similar ways as well, such as hemp is something that produces CBD. And there is a regulatory uh, practice that is put into place by the US government, uh, the federal government, because it is allowed to cross, cross state lines. So that, that's an, an easy hop of the understanding from cannabis to hemp. There's also corn. There's, uh, I know that up in uh, the North Shore, there's alfalfa production. You know, there's a lot, lots of things that can use these types of services. What's more, we're, we're in the, we're in a Zoom call right now. I'm, I'm not down at City Hall right now having this meeting. Um, there's opportunity for us to potentially do um, testing for uh, doctors' offices as well. We, we live in the COVID age where uh, a biosafety level two is all that's required to actually do the testing because of the practices that are involved in actually processing those samples. So nothing that would have to worry the community at all, um, because it would be received in a very clean and, and uh, safe manner. But there, there's lots of areas that we could potentially be exploring. So, so it, it, we come out with our best foot forward in that anything that could potentially worry people, we want to address and answer any questions. Um, but cannabis is not all we're looking to do. We're, if, if anything in this world is, is produced that we can make safer, we, we want to be there.
Yeah, fascinating. I mean, this is something very new for the, for the board. I know that I, it's uh,
Very interesting.
Yeah, first time we've looked at anything like this. That, that is interesting. Um, and uh, it is, it is, it is interesting to try to think of it as an agricultural function. Um, but uh, sure, that, uh, that's interesting. Um, I, I would just comment that, you know, from, from our memo from uh, uh, Department of Planning and Development that uh, and I think uh, Mr. Lockhart alluded to this as well, but you did receive approval from the fire department, solid waste in the Little Police Department. Uh, I think today asked a question as well, but just confirm, there is, there will be no modification to the outside of the building whatsoever. Uh, Caleb touched on the very sensitive uh, issue of odor uh, mitigation or control of the concern. My concern was in a building. This is the first time we look at, at uh, this type of setup. My concern was other tenants within the building. Um, you know, all of a sudden, you know, you're operating and he's, you know, they're, they're sitting there saying, geez, I, I can smell something. So that, that's uh, that's, that also a concern as far as even the other tenants within the building. Um, so I really don't have any other additional comments. Um, more questions or concerns, I think more or less uh, they have been addressed. So I, I do wish you a lot of luck uh, coming out and getting established. You said uh, you're, you're going to be in on the ground floor, only three labs in Massachusetts. Is that correct? So uh, uh, you know, obviously I think that uh, and I, and I don't believe you'll have any boundaries. Is that correct? Could be Lowell returning into the epicenter around here for, for a cannabis product. But uh, I'm assuming you're going to be uh, going across the state of your product.
Yes, we, we would be sending our drivers across the state to go uh, pick up the sample. Uh, in my map, there is actually quite a uh, a focus within the Merrimack Valley uh, as far as cultivators and manufacturers that, that uh, this helps to. Uh, and, and what's more is, you know, people ask me, why Lowell? Well, uh, my, my family has been connected to Lowell for at, at least the last decade. My father is the priest at uh, Holy Trinity Greek Orthodox Church. And we've, we've been happily part of the community and we've been brought into the fold here. And I'd be very happy to bring, you know, a good and positive business here uh, to a city that's really treated us very well as a family.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Russell, any questions, Thomas?
No, Chairman, I think, I think everything's been covered, um, for questions that I had. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, I just have a couple of questions. I, I know when you put your map up there, you showed like what, a few lab stations and stuff. So how many employees do you think you'll have?
Hard, hard to, hard to tell initially.
I noticed on the diagram you had a lab here, a lab here, and you know, when you did your floor plan to us.
Right, so, so tho- that was more stations as far as where we're, we'll have the equipment for, for analyzing the samples in one area. But I, I personally prefer a much more open uh, lab, lab space. I believe walls uh, prevent people from being able to work and collaborate together as a scientist. Um, that's just from a philosophical standpoint. But uh, initially, we, we are looking to bring on uh, roughly a dozen to fifteen employees uh, wi- within the first year or two.
Looking at your demand to start off, is that how it'd be, like?
Precisely, yeah, it's.
You start with a small group until you get more and more product, and then you try to expand?
You got it.
Okay. You have, you have no problem with parking already, I'm not too worried about that.
Right, and, and these are, what's more is we're, we're bringing uh, above, above minimum wage and professional wage jobs to Lowell as well. Both between the, the driver positions, the administration positions, as well as the lab technician positions.
Okay, thank you. Um, so I had, there's a couple of things. We touched on the security. And then, and I think you touched on um, about how the product was destroyed. Um, can you just go over that again briefly? I know you mentioned in your presentation, and then you talked about it more when you put your slide up, how it was broken down. But could you just tell me again how you, um, and I know you wanna, you talked about how everything tries to be, keep it green and everything else. But obviously, um, if you just go over how this destroyed again, I appreciate it.
I'd, I'd be happy to, yes.
Thank you, sir.
Upon retrieval of the samples, uh, they are taken into a minus eighty degree, and again, this is Celsius, not Fahrenheit, so much, much colder. Um, it, it's about the, the temperature of dry ice.
Okay.
So you, you put it in, in the minus eighty degree freezer, and upon doing that, you've already begun the process uh, with, with the material of getting it through the extraction. And what that does, we leave it overnight i- in the freezer at a minimum, and that makes it very brittle. It decreases the odor, as I mentioned, uh, from Mr. Chang. Uh, and then it makes it very easy for us to then take it and grind it up for easy aliquotting of the amount that we will be using, because we don't use the whole sample initially. Uh, any sample that we do not use, we would then add into our uh, chemical waste discard, which basically is a soup of organic solvent uh, that is taken away on a regular basis. So that way, we're not holding on to large uh, vol- volumes of, of organic solvent. Uh, so uh, after it becomes brittle and it's broken down and is, and is weighed out, we put it into the organic solvent, and it is uh, for lack of uh, giving out any further proprietary uh, infor- information, uh, it, it is stirred up, let's say. Uh, and that, that organic solvent actually breaks it, breaks it down uh, into, into its further com- components. Uh, and then ap- upon having that, we, we filter it to be able to put it into our analyzer, so we don't have any large particulates. Uh, those filters are also put into our hazardous waste stream. Uh, and anything else that comes out the other end, all of it goes straight to our hazardous waste stream at that point. So it, it is effectively, the, the minute that it hits that organic solvent and becomes in that supremely brittle and uh, frozen state, it is near, near unusable until it hits the organic solvent. Once it's in the organic solvent, it is unusable as a consumable product. It is only there for an analytical product from that point forward.
Okay, so basically, when you're testing this smell on a product, what type, what type of things you find? Is it like um, pesticides, other type of thing, bacteria? What are you actually finding in this ingredient?
Yes, uh, so, and, and this is something that a lot of scientists don't like to get into, because pesticides, you know, the, the list gets bigger and bigger and bigger, and then you get longer and longer test times. Um, but I, I've been dealing with that, you know, si- since uh, god, gosh, si- since I got out of, out of my undergrad, where, where I was uh, working in the regulatory side of things, because then you have antibiotics for milk products and dairy products, where the list goes on and on and on. Um, but I, so the pesticides are one thing, because one of the common uh, contaminants to uh, the cultivation practices are mites. Uh, you, you have these small insects that get in that will actually uh, eat, eat at the plant and contaminate the plant. So some people will use uh, pesticides, other people will use uh, UV irradiation in order to prevent, prevent them from living on there. Um, problem is that when you get into the damp and humid conditions uh, that these um, these plants are grown in, then it's very common that you will get either a mold or a yeast that will grow on there. And especially in the case of uh, medical patients who use this, you know, recreationally, but really to help with their uh, pharmaceutical regimen, um, then that, that can, that can be fatal. You know, and what's more is you have what are called mycotoxins. So mycotoxins are these byproducts that, that can, that can be produced that uh, are not as small as the pesticides, but not as large as the living organisms that we're speaking of. And those are more things that we are detecting for. Uh, on top of that, we have the active ingredients, because you don't wanna overdose it. I use the word overdose loosely. You can't truly overdose on THC. Um, but, but you, you want to be accurate in the dosage that is on the counter. So you, there is an active ingredient of the uh, things here, and it's different isomers is the word of THC, as I mentioned, as well as CBD. There's CBDA, CBDB, and I, I go on. Uh, on top of that, then there are heavy metals which need to be detected for, and that is very relevant for the manufactured products, especially in the vape cartridges, because the vape cartridges are put in these containers that have, wouldn't you have guessed it, heavy metals? Um, you know, you have lead, you have uh, nickel, you have all of these things that even in parts, parts per billion quantities, which are very, very, very small uh, amounts, can be toxic to the human body. And all of these things are practices that have been crossed within the pharmaceutical industry. Because from, at, at, one of the departments that I've worked in, when I was with Novartis, I was in their vaccine division. I was in their formulation development group. And in formulation development, you know, we have all of these lists from the FDA of people who did not so good things in their formulations. When, uh, one of the scares that was heard was the vitamin E acetate uh, additive, where people who were not legally making this wanted to dilute their product because this sticky oil that's produced from uh, the cannabis, they, they need something similar to dilute it, so they use vitamin E acetate. I didn't even have to think twice to know that that was gonna be a toxic thing, that of course, of course, we wanna test for these things. And as, we want to be as proactive as possible in, in making sure that we are working with the regulators to establish these practices. to establish these practices and make it as safe a- as a process as possible to to test these things.
So talking about the vape, so you'd be test- testing vapes as well as marijuana, like leaves or whatever you wanna call them, as as well?
By law, it is required, anything that is a manufactured product that contains uh cannabis material or marijuana infused product is what what the state calls it, we are required to test as well.
Okay, so you'll be testing the marijuana vapes, which I know when you had a screen earlier, you talked about how a lot of them were just uh tobacco, but then again, the which had a lot of uh other type and and um added ingredients in them as well, but they would have the marijuana, yeah.
Though those that were diagnosed with lung injuries and deaths were all uh marijuana based products that were specifically sold in uh well, so- sold basically from hand to hand. People who were refilling, refilling them in their basements rather than through the proper and and legal methods.
Right, like they call black market, whatever you wanna call it, or street value, whatever. Yeah, and then, cause then they try to keep the price lower than what they're buying it at the at the recreational dispensaries.
Precisely.
But then you don't know what you get, right?
And and there's been.
If you tell, tell people, you never know what you get from a drug deal.
And and what's more, what's more is, you know, I mentioned about how, you know, we help out the retailers. Uh, there have been a number of articles that have been put out that there are retailers that are unable to, you know, they have purchased, say, a thousand pounds of product, and they are unable to accept it, because it's taking them weeks to almost a month to get a certificate of analysis for for the product. And then by then, you're reaching other issues, because it's sitting around for all that time, and it's not being turned over. It it's gonna start growing other things on it, you're you, it's gonna get contaminated one way or another.
Oh, by just sitting in the marijuana itself, will will get contaminated? A while?
It it can, it certainly can.
Yeah, I mean, I I know you mentioned how like, how it's like a moist product and how it grows and, you know, wet environments and heat like that. Obviously, you can see where that moisture could uh start growing a lot of other things on those leaves.
Oh, yeah, certainly.
Okay, all right, thank you. A lot of that was informative information, I I don't know if it applies to the site plan, but I think as Jerry alluded to earlier, um, you know, it's a new product that's coming before us, so hopefully we get educated a little bit more on it. So people say, you know, hey, what the heck did you do the other night on this uh ma- marijuana testing facility? At least we'll have a little background information, so I appreciate you um um dealing with me on that, but I appreciate it very much.
Oh, it's not, it it's not bearing with you, I I literally went to school for it, so I love talking about it.
Good, good, I appreciate it. Yeah, because like you say, it's a, it's a new, it's a whole new thing coming into wash, you know, we've done the recreational, we've done the manufacturing, now the testing. This is a uh wi- wide open experience for us for the first time, so the more information we can get from you, the more I know, I appreciate it, and I'm sure the other boys. And plus, it makes our job easier, as I always say, more information you have, the better decision making uh upon ourselves, so.
Anything I can do to help, yeah.
Thank you, sir. So what, um, do any of the board members have any questions? Um, any comments, or is that what I said, what other board members had? I think some of the things that we have to consider is, you know, um, if we're gonna go forward on this party tonight would be, you know, we'd have to, you know, put a condition off, like, you know, maybe the storm water, make sure you notify the fire department about the hazardous materials. Uh, you know, a couple of those things in nature, but I think that's something you said you were willing to work with, though.
Yeah.
Yeah, a- and as I mentioned, you know, e- even if we were to vote and acquire the special permit this evening, uh, this is an ongoing process where we still need to put in for our building permits, and we need to be compliant to all codes that are within the city uh for regulatory purposes.
So basically, you must be controlled by the cannabis control commission as well, then, right?
That is correct, yeah, so we will be going to them for our provisional and then eventual final license.
See, that's like, when we come up before, I think when Caleb mentioned, I'm talking about the odor mitigation, uh, I call it the smell test, but what happened was, we had a re- we had one that that was, that was um manufacturing it, and it and it was up and growing, up and going before our ordinance went into effect. And people in the neighborhood could smell it. Then it came to, it came to our attention, then they want to expand the, expand the business. So we go down here, I'm not even out of our cars yet, Mr. Vichette and I and other women, we're smelling this product. I'm standing by the security camera, and he's looking at me, and I'm like, can I help you? And I'm like, no, I'm looking at your site plan, right? I'm like, I can smell it, uh, you know, the whole neighborhood can smell it. Uh, but since we didn't have the ordinance in effect at the time, and now that they came back, of course, they went back and and fixed everything, all their ventilation on the roof, put in the, put in the plan that we can comply by. So we always say that, you know, as a clinician, we wanna make sure that it meets the um odor mitigation plan, and therefore, if it does start to smell in any reason, at least we as a local board have some recourse. And most of the applications, that's fine, we're okay with that, because we know it meets the cannabis control report. So a lot of times, we, as you know, we, we, I don't think if you know, but I should say, we put in that condition, so therefore, if something is, we don't have to go to the state, we can come in and say, hey, it's brought to our attention, this is one of our conditions. And nine times out of luck, um, the applicant can fix that, you know, whether it's, um, you know, like they they put in through all the ventilation through the roofs and fixed everything else, and now we have a monitoring plan, and now it seems to be do- doing very well. So sometimes we put that in as a condition as well, but just to touch base, I know it's, like you say, uh, controlled by the commission, but sometimes we like this. But I was staying up on that, so basically, we have some to fall back on if, as Jerry alluded to, somebody down the hall says, hey, I can smell the smell on the hall all day, you know? And and then obviously, if you attended somewhere else, you'd understand the same same condition that we're looking at, so. All right, so I appreciate that, thank you, sir.
And and I've been in some of some of these manufacturing cultivation facilities, you know, visiting with these as potential customers. The second you walk in the door, you know, I.
Yeah, you have to have pungent odor, I mean, you know, it's like, it's like, you know, you're leaving your cows like McDonald's food, you smell the next day. You know?
Yeah, no, no, thank you. Uh.
All right, thank you, sir, I I have nothing further, any of the board members?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so um, we do need, what the, um, I'm just checking on one thing, so. We're looking for, let me just pull up my.
It's a special permit and site plan.
Yeah, I'm just looking, we need both, yeah, that's right. Double check on that, so. We need, yeah, the special permit as indicated, which I read off the agenda, oh, here, it's my agenda, yeah, yeah. So we need the special permit and the site plan.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion, I think first, for the special permit, because most of these conditions apply more to the special permit than site plan, and then.
Okay.
The board so wishes we can uh incorporate those conditions then into the site plan. Uh, but I make a motion to uh uh approve the uh the special permit with following conditions, that the um uh subject to uh clarification, that the applicant is in uh compliance with the um thousand foot radius of from another facility. And I believe we determined that at this meeting, but I certainly just wanna make sure that we've conditioned it. Um, and also, uh, the uh condition number two is that the applicant will comply with uh requirements of the Mass Cannabis uh Commission relative to odor mitigation, and applicant will uh comply with uh any mo- odor mitigation that may be deemed necessary by the city of Lowell. Um, the applicant um will comply with the uh security uh plan as required by the Mass Cannabis Control, uh and also it will be in full compliance with the security plan agreed by the city of Lowell Police Department, and that will incorporate, the reason I phrase it that way, that will incorporate the hiring of a director. And the applicant uh will comply with uh the ongoing uh requirements by the city of Lowell Fire Department. And the applicant shall um the, shall say, the proposed property redevelopment will require a stormwater permit uh to mitigate the impact of stormwater runoff from the property. The applicant uh will uh provide uh the um stormwater improvements, the pur- the uh in proportion to the proposed investment in the property. Uh, so the applicant and the owner will need to be provide the stormwater mitigation team with those uh figures in order for the appropriate um mitigation to be uh recommended by the stormwater uh.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor um with several conditions. Fran, do you have any concerns on those conditions, if you get those, okay?
I got them all, great.
Okay, thank you, I wanna double check, okay. All right, so we have a motion by Mr. Vichette to approve the special permit with the conditions as outlined.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Vichette, sure.
Okay, that was Mr. Malovich for the second, okay?
Yeah.
So we have Mr. Malovich second the matter, um, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, Chair, vote yes. Any opposition? Hearing none, the special permit is approved. And now we need to vote on the site plan?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the site plan incorporating the, all of the conditions uh is that were just issued with the approval of the special permit.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Vichette and second by Mr. Lockhart to approve the site plan with the same conditions as outlined it, outlined by the special permit. So um all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 Chair, Chair, vote yes. Any opposition? Hearing none, uh, the site plan is approved. Good luck, sir, we wish you well, and thank you for a little bit of education this evening on uh, and we wish you very well, and hopefully uh you'll make that product a lot safer to everybody in our community and the surrounding community.
Thank you all for your time, and especially Fran, with all of your help getting to this evening, uh, you you've been a great help. All all of you, thank you very much, and have a good evening.
You're welcome, and there's a lot to like about, a lot to like about Lowell, so I know when you said you like, moved in here and you're comfortable, so.
Oh, yeah.
That's one of our sayings, you know, the advertise.
Wait, when when COVID's over, we we'd be happy to see you all at Holy Trinity's uh Cultural Festival some sometime.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good luck, thank you very much. Okay, so. But that matters, a bit of it proves, so. Moving along, we have uh, and the and the uh other business, or have any communication from board members?
Yes, I have a a historic order report, Mr. Chairman. Um, in our December fourteenth meeting before Christmas, we adopted a a draft of um policy for the historic district in downtown Lowell for murals. There's been a lot of talk about different murals on.
Oh, yeah, they've been doing those in a lot of other cities around us, yeah.
Yeah, which is kind of exciting, you could really dress it up, but it's got to be controlled uh and and building, historic buildings have got to be protected from, you know, misapplication. But we did develop a draft on December fourteenth, we will continue to develop that, uh and I will continue to report on its progress. It's uh, we can have a an interesting visual impact on downtown Lowell that uh, and that also includes some uh illuminations, you know, building, lighting and and different things, so uh we're gonna have fun with this, but we're gonna do a good job and tighten it up. That's all.
All right, good luck, and thank you, Richard.
Uh, Chairman, can can I add something?
Sure, absolutely, Caleb.
Funny, funny, uh, Richard mentioned that, so um uh I I was, uh, I have been involved with a DIY Lowell project to illuminate one of the uh goal signs, uh which I believe is still on right now, um on the uh air building, the AC air building, so if you have not noticed, um, when you pass by, I think downtown, uh we we have a projector up there and then projecting a s- a series of like uh vintage advertisement on the wall, basically on the air sign, where where the signs have faded. So uh every evening is on there, so.
It is, uh, actually, uh, Steve Stoll sent out a a video on that, Caleb. That's a, that's a board review, and it's pretty impressive, yeah.
Thank you.
Neat way to do that, yeah.
Hey, thank you, Caleb, thanks for that update.
It washes off, it washes off a lot easier that way, right?
It's like the Batman thing in the sky, right?
Yeah, exactly. I like it, I like the sound of that.
Uh, anybody else have any updates? Uh, no, Fran, any anything that you you wanna mention to us, or are we all set?
Um, just that we are hopefully um welcoming a few new members onto our team very soon, I'm looking forward to it. Um, no, I can't reveal who they are yet, but.
Okay, we understand.
Yeah.
I know you're in the process of 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 interviewing people to try to get people on in the planning staff.
Yes.
So hopefully that's coming close to a resolution?
Yes, which I'm very excited about.
Yeah, I I I'm sure you are, I know you need some help, especially after everybody left, but uh you've been doing a good job, we commend you for that. Okay, anybody else have any comments? If not, we can entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion's made, and second by.
Bob Malovich.
Mr. Malovich, uh, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Uh, we, uh, Chairman says yes, no opposition, we have adjourned, good night, thank you, everybody.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night, good night.
Night, everyone. Bye. Bye.
You're safe.
Yep, exactly.